Great, and we're live on recording as well.
Yes.
Wonderful, good morning, everybody, welcome. This is a regular term meeting of the B County Commissioners' Court, calling to order. Today is Monday, August 12th, 2024, time is 9:01 a.m. We are physically located in B County Courthouse Commissioners' Court Room Number 110105, West Morris Christie Street, email taxes 78102. That was the call to order. Agenda item number two, prayer, would have been, please stand and join Commissioner Lenny in brief prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for another day of life. Be with us all as we make decisions for this county, you're the betterment of this county. Dear Lord, thank you for the abundance of rain and now the heat and sunshine to make all this grass grow. Be with each and every one of us as we travel through our day, through our week, month and year. Keep us safe in your march, dear Lord. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Now, please show your hands, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas pledge.
On behalf of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
No, I did not.
No, I didn't. I was, that was you, man.
You kind of got sawed in one spot. I always stumble. It was like, oh, I was gonna pass out. But I didn't. I powered on through.
This is agenda item number four, recognition of visitors. I know we have a few visitors in the audience today. Thank y'all for being here. This is not public comment, and if you are on the agenda and you're going to speak during your agenda, you don't need to identify yourself. But if there's any members in public who wish to identify themselves for the record, now is the time to do so. Otherwise, thank y'all for being here, please come back.
Is this appropriate timeline to identify Ms. Figurstapp, Chamber President? The Chamber President just has comments if, 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 if.
I'll bring you up during public comment. Thank you for being here, Ms. Figurstapp, it's always good. Moving on to agenda item number five, Commissioners' Court, opening remarks. Are we, Commissioner Lenny?
Take your pick.
Okay, I choose, I choose you, buddy. What's going on?
Man, give him the spears.
Are you taking some Commissioner DeWitt's time?
Yeah, all of it. He said he didn't want to talk this morning, so.
Really?
Okay.
Settle it, though.
No, it's not too bad. Pretty short and sweet this morning. I want to thank Saint James Church, they had asked me to call their bingo last Sunday. It was well attended. You guys haven't ever gone. I like to play bingo, but calling is one thing. So if you guys ever go, get a chance to go, either next month in November, a lot of time to attend that. I'm getting calls about mowing, don't figure with the abundance of rain and grass is growing like wildfire with the sunshine and heat. People just be calm, be patient, you know, I have called Roden Bridge on it, like I'm sure all the Commissioners have. They only got so many people that can get out there on mowers and in most of these county roads, so they will eventually get to all of them, it's just gonna take time. So just be, just know that, that when you have called, that we do let Roden Bridge know. They may not just say they can't get to your particular county road in a couple of days, as some expect. They are working diligently and getting to all of them as time goes on. Keep that in mind. Got a call about a safety issue on 797-888. There's been a lot of accidents there. But this particular person had, you're coming from Skidmore up to 888 at the stop sign, you couldn't see any traffic coming from Tynan. So I went out there and looked at it, and sure enough. So trimmed the fence line up, and now when you're at the stop sign, you can see any vehicles coming from Tynan, so got that taken care of. Also, I will be getting with maintenance on some very much needed cosmetic improvements inside of the EXO. We're gonna look at doing some painting and just greasing up the place. A little more, feeling more attractive, people that meant that, the EXO out there events. They just need to, so I'll be getting with maintenance on that here very shortly, if that's taken care of. With that, I have to look you up in a minute.
Thank you, sir. A few seconds? I'll do, I'll try to keep it as short as I can. One thing that, talking about the mowing.
That's quite a commitment, Commissioner.
Talking about the mowing, now, I don't think the county is gonna mind if you mow the county right away where your fence line is. No one's gonna stop you. I mowed my fence line at my ranch this weekend on County Road 113. By all means, just be careful.
There's a lot of roundbells around my area on the road.
On the side?
Yeah. We haven't been bailing all weekend, it was like.
And that's my next subject, is the hay that's being put up up in Rock End of the County. It didn't look like we were gonna have much hay crop this year, and a lot of people have put out their fertilizer, didn't get any rain, and now we've had rain, and they're making a bumper hay crop on the roundbell. I had one fellow that said last year, I think he said he got 20 roundbells, and this year they got 60 some odd off the same few areas. So everybody would be going into winter this year with a lot of hay, that's what's a good thing, because hay has gotten very expensive. Had a meeting in Mineral Saturday, and a lot of the folks at Mineral have me on their speed dial. Anytime those lights go out or start staying on on those wind towers at night, they call me because the radar's out. Right there, the radar is not functioning properly, so the lights are only on at night when it shouldn't be, they're only supposed to be on when there's aircraft in the area, and so we're, we're trying to take care of that. Also, just to let everybody know that the highway department, you've seen all the states, you've seen the surveyors out on 181, that is in progress to widen that road, to take in the old railroad right away and make it four lane from here to Kennedy Corner City. They're doing their preliminary flood surveys, boundary surveys, that'll probably happen in the next four, five years, but it's in the works. And as we all know, that same thing is gonna happen on 673, which is the road from Beeville to Mineral on the, on E. They've been doing a survey on the road from 351, which is bypassing Beeville out toward Mineral. They're just about complete with those surveys now. To my knowledge, that construction will start next year, and what it, basically the message is they're gonna widen 673 a couple of feet. Now, that sounds real easy, except it's not. You can't just go lay two feet of pavement next to existing pavement. You've gotta rip up the road, put new base and everything in, so it's gonna be a major undertaking once they're started, and it'll be a inconvenience for the folks that live in the mineral area driving back and forth. That's how it works in the precinct, and with that, I will pass my colleague's call.
All right. Still busy with contractors all the last two weeks. Ms. Mattis' building still giving me some headaches in the front with the water penetrations. Hopefully we'll get a couple of bids in on that by, by tomorrow. Sorry, the building.
No, they have it right.
That's right. Only one range there. I had a couple of meetings at the, at the Auditor's Office, trying to understand the budget and trying to get some of these numbers right, and was, can't do, thank you for explaining some of these things and how they work there. I appreciate that. We had a, our first preventative maintenance meeting Wednesday. Thank you, Mr. Ryan, Rob, John and Gabe, Patricia and Debbie, for, Debbie's leading the charge on that one, so we're trying to get everything on the building lined up. We got a great start, we got a good, a good base there, so we'll be moving on and trying to get everything lined up kind of in an orderly fashion. And, you know, preventative and also proactive about something breaking down or getting ready for it. Had a meeting with the jail standards advisory board this week, and just, they're getting ready for their big meeting coming up here next, beginning of next month, and there's a lot of changes coming up in the jail standards, so that was pretty interesting to, a lot of you, pretty interesting. And like Commissioner said over there, we have, I'm getting lots of calls on the, on 417, 420, the Berkeley area, there's lots of grass in the road, I'm on the way, hey, we do have one mower down, Roden Bridge, they're trying to get it up, repair it because they are, they're swamped. So Mr. Mendoza is also poisoning some of the sides of the road to help out with some of the grass and some of the problems there. Had a call on car road, the edges of the road are all eaten up, worse, they're, they're getting bad, I'm on the list to get that done. Had a lady check, I checked out the corner of Third Street, pit start back there, they've been almost been screaming for a life for, for quite a long time. I thought they were on the list, see what we can get done. This week, I'll be taking off to College Station. This is our final meeting for the Commissioners' Court leadership, and graduation this week. So they taught us to go to the, our senators and representatives, and taught us all the gates and hours of a lot of the mechanics of how Commissioners' Court should run, and how it does run in this state, so I'll be attending that. They say when one door closes, a bigger door opens. That's, just wanted to give you all an announcement at BDA, I know that we had Trigale even.
I had no idea where that was going, that one. I know, that's what I thought.
No, no, no.
Sam, don't say it.
But we do have a prospective client that's gonna, that's fixing to lease all the buildings, 24, 25, 26, paint, everything, whatever. So I can't disclose right now who it is, because all the paperwork will be in transit, and so, I mean, that's, that's a big light at the end of the top there for us, so we're pretty excited. I'll bring you more details later.
So you didn't work as long, but that's, yeah, that's good, that's.
And with that, I'll pass with, I don't know what it was gonna, go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. First of all, I'd like to start a little recognition, I'd like to recognize Rob Ryan, who used his electrical skills, he identified that the wrong breaker was actually installed. We had the correct wiring, but as he was checking out the panel break, he noticed it didn't have 15 amp breakers, so we got that correct, so kudos to Ryan for another set of eyes to identify the mistakes, even though we have an enormous amount of people looking at it sometimes for a set of eyes. That being said, Commissioner DeWitt also identified another challenging area, the access walkway where all the piping is to, to get into the, to the plumbing system. They are starting installing some drywall, sheet rock, if you will, and of course, you know, normally that area is left open. The, the drywall was installed according to the drawings and specifications, so that is correct. We did get back to the team, and we had some discussion around it, Commissioner, and we opted, we're gonna go ahead and leave the drywall up just to help protect some of the piping there, but we're not gonna tape it or floor it, so in any event of a leak, you just gotta remove that one panel and go back and put it, so, so thanks. So a good set of eyes, we're always welcome to these comments, you just never know, sometime you don't catch everything because your focus can be somewhere else, so, but thank you, gentlemen, for, for doing that. On the ELC, last week, they completed the install, the roof fence for air handling units two and three. Water supply was connected to the, to the building and was tested, so all good, no leaks. And also attended a budget meeting for furniture, so that was all good, more to come with that. And then this week, we're planning on quitting all the drywall and the rush rooms in the ELC building. They're gonna solve what they call Level One taping and clothing of the drywall, so that's gonna, they'll, 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 and then also planning on turning on the HVAC system, so we'll check the, check the system out. Last week, I had a fortunate opportunity to attend the Beeville City budget hearings. Interesting process, good formative for my unit from the county side, so I was in attendance with that. Also, I attended the Chamber of Commerce, they held a strategic planning meeting, which was, itself a great meeting, even though the attendance was low, but our meeting was very effective, got to a little bit broader understanding of what's taking place in our county. Also, I attended a Beeville ISD athletic fundraiser, unbelievable what, what they're able to do, they were able to raise $78,000 in one night for kids. Commissioner Willis was there as well, too, just, just amazing how much money can be raised in one night. And, and the good part is it's just gonna go to all the athletic departments, not on just one, with all the schools and Beeville ISD. Also attended a Monarch Scholarship Program mentoring training again, so I'm gonna be mentoring students again this year, so training went well, looking, looking forward to meeting my new students. In the Skidmore area, just want to recognize Ray Longgordia and Jonathan, our superintendent, and their entire team for responding to so many needs that are, that are being asked, cutting grass, mosquitoes, so just want to remind everyone, they're doing the best they can to get everyone, one of the areas, we had to go back and respray for mosquitoes, we had to complain that they weren't sprayed, but they didn't see the truck passing down, so we sprayed it again. And the challenge of spraying on mosquitoes, as we all know, depending on which way the wind's blowing, your affected area may not get what it's going to needs, so, but that creates another effect, because now everybody wants to double, double spray, so which is not practical, because we have such a large area, so Mr. Mendoza is doing a great job doing that, the mosquitoes are down. But because of the great rain that we have, it creates mosquitoes, and also creates higher grass, so everything is being worked on. So I'm gonna be meeting with the, the several patients, as Commissioner Lenny said, I'm gonna be meeting with the Roden Bridges, trying to get an idea what their schedule is for the next kind of month, and also we'll be able to get all of your, your calls, so. Been in a ton in area, AP is working diligently to get some new biting installs and more from that. And with that, Judge, I'm trying to go over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you for all y'all's updates. Last week, I was here on a probate case, I was sitting in the seat, and there was a little note, and it says, hi, George Small, God bless you, that's very sweet. This is Bryn Lee, P.S., I'm a kid, and I don't know who Bryn Lee is, but, and I hope you're not watching today, because I expect you're probably in school learning, but thank you, that really, really made my day, it was very sweet, so, thank you for that. Moving on to agenda item number six, public comment. Do we have any members in the public who wish to address Commissioners' Court? Ms. Figurstapp, would you like to come up at this time? While you're making your way up, I'm gonna run right here.
But you may, may I pass out something to you all?
You may. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to, first of all, good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see everyone. Just had three items, I'd like to periodically come into Commissioners' Court to share with you all some of the activities of the chamber, we want to make you aware of the things that we're working on and ways that we can partner and. First thing I wanted to mention is we did have a Chamber of Commerce luncheon this Thursday, some of you have already signed up for that, and I'll attend, and that's the local emergency planning committee that's gonna talk about hazardous chemicals and how what to do in a case, whether it's on your property, whether it's a workplace, whether it's home, so looks like we've got about, it's summertime and attendance is a little slower, but we've got a nice crowd coming out to watch, and appreciate your attendance for those of you that are registered. And then secondly, as Commissioner Oliver has mentioned, we started four-day community strategic planning committee, and that encompasses, and we were hoping to get representation and have, from the city, the county, Main Street, the downtown co-op, the agriculture extension agent was there as well, and what we're, what we're trying to do is, is get everybody at the table, we all have, wear our community development hats, but we want, and we all have our different approaches of how we're trying to do that, so, and Commissioner, if you want to allude to how you felt of the meetings since you were there.
Oh, we love coming.
You're not, oh, okay, so sorry. But we, yeah, but with, the idea was basically to get together, have a conversation about the different things that we're doing, for example, the chamber, if I know what's going on the Main Street, then we can promote what their, the different activities that they're, they're organizing, same with the downtown co-op. The AgroLife Extension Office is working with landowners, many times chambers where there are issues, we can help convey some of those issues to the landlords and community, maybe assist, so that's the purpose of the committee, because our first meeting, we decided to meet bimonthly, and, or every other month, and, and hopes that it will grow, and thought it was very productive, and, and hope that it will continue, and work together and partner the ways that we can. And last but not least, we did form, sent an email to you all, and to share that we formed a government affairs committee. We're not trying to get into lobbying, we're not trying to get into legislation, the chamber has a base of, right, of 200 members, and what we're wanting to do is communicate to our members, and what I've shared with you, these are the, the Texas House of Representatives and the lieutenant governors, their, their interim charges, so the way that we're coaching this is, the state is saying that these are their priorities and the areas in which they're, they're focusing, and the chamber is going to be sending out a survey to our membership to ask them, what are your priorities? And as I come to Commissioners' Court and to City Council, we just want to partner with our local, state and federal representatives to work with you to, if there's anything that we can share for you with, with our members that's important from a Commissioner's standpoint, county area, the same with the city. The committee is planning to, as elections, at the end of the election, we'd like to put on a reception to introduce those newly elected officials to the community, and there's also, the chamber in the past, there's the Day of Beeville in Austin, you have your Day of County Day, this coordinates a group of people, local leaders that can go and speak to Austin about the issues that are important to Beeville and Bee County. So that, that's been formed, and, and just wanted to share that with us, send that email, but we're just trying to find a way to advocate for our members, communicate, and just keep up to date for those things that are important to the county.
Thank you so much, Ms. Figurstapp, for being here this morning, we appreciate it. We appreciate your doing.
Thank you.
Excuse me, is there anybody else who wishes to address Commissioners' Court at this time? Okay, moving on, agenda item number seven, the following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners' Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or county judge.
So a second?
Oh, a motion and a second. Further discussion, bearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on, discuss and consider action on the following items. I'm going to move agenda item number 11 up in front of agenda item number eight, and so we'll go a little bit out of order, and then go back to our regularly planned agenda. Agenda item number 11, approved recommendations from the policy formulation committee pertaining to county-owned vehicles. Oh, go ahead, jump up. I have a motion to approve, you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner DeWitt, you have a quote?
I applaud the committee, this is, in my opinion, very well done, I especially liked the very last sentence, the quote says, "Any other additional inscription shall be approved by B County Commissioners' Court prior to placement." So I applaud the committee for, for working on this, everybody did a good job. The passion court is woven into this very well, and that's my comment.
Oh, that's a good comment, I like that, I echo the same sentiments, thank you. We have Ms. Mattis here at this point from the tax office, she was, were you heading up this committee?
No, I, Ms. Estrada is.
You need a vote?
I am just here, like, Ms. Estrada.
Okay. Oh.
Do you have some information for the court about the removal of some vehicles?
Um, well, actually, I do, I spent a better half of Friday morning getting quotes for the removal of at least of two of the vehicles, lettering, and I did speak with Aztec, and they graciously allowed us to take them, two of our vehicles, and they're going to remove them of no reason.
Oh, that's wonderful, thank you, Aztec Chevrolet.
Awesome.
Should've brought my water cup down. I presume it was a Chevy, was it Ford? Which Aztec? Chevy. That's a good quote.
It is, it's the greatest quote, I forget.
Do they have any vehicles they'll give us for free?
No, but since we do do business, they have graciously.
That's it, yeah, ten-year no interest. Thank you, Ms. Mattis, we really appreciate everything that y'all have done for us in this regard, and the other policy issues that y'all have been addressing. Is there anything further you need to share with us at this time?
No, I just wanted to also present that inside this document also pertains the agrolife extension transportation for the 4H students, and we did look it up with insurance, and we did get with their entities as well, and it is allowed for them to transport the children for county use, or for private use for their purposes.
Excellent.
And then we did have, the policy committee could not find anything in our research in regarding to separation of church and state supporting the need to remove a God we trust currently printed on the county vehicle, on a county vehicle, therefore the committee recommend, recommendation is to be the final decision to the discretion of the court on that matter.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner DeWitt, do you have something else you want to do? Okay, at this time, if there's, are there any further discussion?
Your Honor, permission to address the court. My apologies, touch your hand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As I'm already addressing the court.
Yeah, go ahead.
Your Honor, I was requested to give a letter of opinion on this, and I apologize to the court, it shouldn't have made an entry for package, it did not, and the size of the lettering and all that, that's pretty axiomatic, the letter opinion, and there's, and the AG opinion attached deals with the issue of whether or not the county chooses to put in God we trust on certain vehicles, or leave in God we trust on certain vehicles. And for the record, it's not a violation of separation of churches.
Thank you. Okay. And that was Mike Knight, B County Attorney.
Hey, what was the final recommendation of the attorney? It's acceptable. And you can, we just took a few minutes to review the letter, I kept it virtually short. For example, if any of you were to pull in, pull a dollar bill, a five dollar bill, a Ben Franklin, who knows, Andrew Jackson out of your, out of your pocket, if you, on one side, it's gonna say in God we trust. Nobody's asked to take it off our money, so I think that speaks for itself.
Thank you, sir.
And for the record, violates, separation of churches, say, does not appear anywhere in the Constitution. That crept into legal life unfortunately because of a letter from a Danbury Baptist, between, between Danbury Baptist and Thomas Jefferson, which a Supreme Court, Justice Black put his opinion, and someone else talked about it. It took on a life of its own. In a nutshell, the First Amendment of the Constitution, when it speaks to religion, it says that, it says freedom of religion, not freedom from religion, and it stands for proclamation, we will not adopt a state religion or official religion that forces everyone, or compel everyone to adopt that religion, beginning and end of the end. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Oliver?
Yeah, just for education for me, since I'm the U.S. member here in court, you know, obviously staying with the letter of the law and in compliance, I'm fully supportive of that, I'm just kind of curious that something occurred to get us into compliance after all these years, I hope that something that drove us will refine, will, will make up.
Oh, so initially, I mean, there's a, there's a reason why it came up, and it had to deal with the identification of sign of that was impermanently fixed to county vehicles. So everything else sort of came out as a result. Big thanks to the committee for, you know, fully addressing the issue and going through the policy, our existing policy at the time, addressed various vehicle issues all throughout, so one of the things that they wanted to do was try to find a way to unify and make that uniform in our policy, so that we, as Commissioners' Court, could provide clear direction to our employees, department heads and elected officials.
Thank you. Two, two other quick questions, I guess, does the committee- I guess, does the committee, what is the total cost to the county going to be a couple more, you know, getting all these vehicles up to speed?
Well, the, the vehicles that already have inscriptions on them, they can leave them. All we have to do is replace or add to what is there. We want to leave the vehicles as is and just put on their what is required. The removing, there was only two vehicles that we had that needed items removed, and Aztec has kindly, like I say, given to us for free.
How many, how many vehicles are out of compliance as far as the hundred foot?
All of them.
All of them?
But I have, we have not got a quote yet.
So it's all of them, it's all of them in breach?
And... And the 4-H vehicles, any of them.
Can we know approximately?
But the Sheriff's Office is not included because they are emergency vehicles.
Approximately cost?
I think the main thing with it is, it all bears, which aren't all of them.
And it, and all of the vehicles have to save the county and then the department. They don't have to have the seal, they're not, the seals are not required, just the county and then the department.
Yeah, correct from long too. As of today, right now, any additional descriptions, if anybody wants to put on their vehicle, regardless of what it is, needs to come to the court.
And then, last but not least, as far as the statute, it reads out, you know, minimum has to be seen from 100 feet away. I think a lot has to do with individuals. The only suggestion I would like to make to the Court is that we're consistent across all our entities, that whatever letter size, sign and pick, we do it across the board, not one group, but two inches, and then put three or one inch or three inches, because you can't see the one inch from 100 feet away.
Yeah, we did put approximately three inches so that we wouldn't give format three inches.
Yeah, but just make it consistent across the board would be my suggestion.
Yeah, it said, it even says in there, approximately three inches.
But when I see the word approximately, you know, judge may like to do two inches and...
I agree, it's a good point. Thank you.
You know, somebody that...
We can, we can convert it to be less than, or just be at three inches.
Whenever there's an addition of a vehicle, where does that department or that person go to?
They would have to really do Commissioners' Court.
No, I mean to approve the, I mean, we already approved the letters, we know what's going to go, but do they go get permission from your office? They, the decal, they follow the policy or...
Hopefully in the future, it will be part of the approval process during the budget set season when we're upgrading the acquisition.
Okay, that way nobody...
Or the purchase order process as well, because, and that kind of stops it, but...
That's where it can get caught right here.
Because it'll be a vendor that doesn't go to the, go through the process, so we can hopefully try to circumvent there.
If we can pass it here and somebody's going to order something, it's not like, hey, we're going to use vendor A and they know what to do.
We did discuss getting like a template, that way we can provide that specific template to all vendors, that way we have a specific one that we use on any vehicle. And they are required on both sides of the vehicle.
Or at least to the departments that have fleet, because there's only certain departments that have vehicles.
Because it is required on the vehicles and heavy equipment, according to the state.
Yeah, correct. It all happens about the same time, because you have to order exempt license plates, it takes a while for them to come in. Hopefully, the vehicle will not be driven until everything's done. The letters, the decal, the license plates, and it's completed.
Should that be part of the policy, Commissioner?
We don't worry about that with the Board if we get there. I think it's dead, battery's dead. If they don't even start.
No, but you bring up an excellent point, but as we get new vehicles in the future, it'd be good to have a part of the policy.
Well, it encourages the department to, pretty up to be adjusted.
So what's the actual... We already have an opinion motion in a second. I'm just reviewing the provision again. I'll add comments.
And we can adjust that if we'd like, just to be the three inches.
The only thing I think would be great, and again, a suggestion back to the committee is that, you know, that we're consistent, you know, only three inches, two and a half.
And the only reason we put approximately three inches is because it said 100 feet. And again, that is according to a person, some people can see it a lot better at 100 feet than others, but we did put approximately inches, just the state, who does not specify, just as a...
Because I've seen other county vehicles and they're, they're all... All I'm saying for the county to be consistent, decide all day too.
No, we can do that, you know, yawn, yawn.
No changes on yours?
No, sir. I mean, our truck is kind of falls in the same category as the Sheriff's Office, because it's an emergency vehicle.
Thanks.
So it's, that's the difference between a maintenance vehicle and ours, falls in that same ground.
You know, it's something that, when I was looking at their vehicle, I didn't realize, the stars that you have on there?
Yes.
That's an international symbol for, for that, isn't it?
It's just a nationally recognized emergency manifest.
Right, and I didn't realize that, so that, we need to get that out so everybody knows that, it's not just to be pretty, it's, it's a symbol, it means something.
Yes, sir.
Well, I appreciate us moving forward and, and bringing the least amount of additional purchasing that we can. So I appreciate that from the committee, saying that we can move forward.
Yes.
And not go backward.
Yeah, I agree. That's good.
I was going to suggest that based on the kinds of, this, that, or, right, who's coming, or who's going to be, that's sure, that I have a, approximately three-inch font, comma, or the size, we should, to watch out for, so that we're, so we're, it's, it's, it's not, I think that's supposed to, you should, I have the cards of the exception.
Let me revise my motion just a, just a little bit, to prove this with the following addition, where it says, "All county-owned vehicles and heavy equipment shall have printed", before that, insert the words, "prior to use". Prior to use, all county-owned vehicles and heavy equipment shall have printed on each side and the rest of that.
Comma, prior to use.
Then, further down is, the title of the Department or Office must be in letters plain of legible at a distance of not less than 100 feet, approximately three-inch font, comma, however, the size shall be uniform to all county vehicles other than emergency vehicles as defined below.
I have an amended motion. Commissioner Ollin, does?
Second.
Good, okay. I have amended the second as well. Is there any further discussion? That's good, thank you all. Thank you for bringing it to our discussion. It was a good discussion we had this morning on the other additional items, which we may see come back from a little quarter later date under separate agenda items. Yes, Commissioner?
How quickly, someone because it's community fair, they do have only one vehicle that they use, they seem not to use it at all until this gets done?
That'd be the first one, it goes to the shop.
I just have to get with Mr. Guerrero and here with Aztec, and it'll take, they said approximately two to three days, and I see it will take that long.
There's another vehicle, you're going to be embarrassed.
Also in that motion, if this will be in effect September 1, 2024.
So that's a second amendment?
Second amendment.
Do I have a second?
No, sir. You said September 1? Gives us a little time to get it done.
September 1?
September 1.
September 1. Gives us a little time.
And now go with Mr. Guerrero to see what we can do to the second vehicle to not uphold at this time.
Otherwise, you have to take, right, older.
Off the dead battery.
If it's a dead battery, what? That's all it is, the dead battery.
Let's get it in the shop, let's get it in the battery, we'll get it to, how we'll authorize that expenditure out of Community Affairs Management. That was a great point, thank you, Commissioner. Anything else? There's no rush here, we want to get it right.
Fix it.
We'll get it up.
Yeah, clean it up.
Okay.
Either a wall, that's the way I feel, but I don't keep you started.
Anything further? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Ms. Mattis. You are excused unless you have something else on the agenda this morning? Oh, you do? Oh, well, then why didn't I put this? I thought I was helping you out.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Knight, for your comments as well, yeah. At this point in time, and I know this is a little out of, out of order, and I think we've all been thinking about this the last several days, and in my haste to get into the agenda, I, I completely omitted what I had intended to do. Be-County was very saddened to hear of the, the passing of Tony Ferguson, he passed away last week. I, anybody that's on Facebook saw countless emails or posts and comments from former students that he coached and that he taught. He was an employee of Be-County for a little over or around a decade. He was a great, a great asset to the county. He was a wonderful Veteran Services Officer. He did great things for that, for that position and for our veterans in the community. I don't have any, any information as of this time on, on his services, but I'm sure that will be made public and will be published, widespread shortly. But at this time, I'd ask that we have a moment of silence and reflect upon the life and the passing of Coach. Thank you. I'd like to extend our sincere condolences to Tony's wife, his family, his friends, loved ones. And I'd open the floor, if any Commissioner would like to make any comments at this time.
Tony, Tony worked for the county a little over 10 years, and I was involved when he was originally hired. And he, he poured his soul into that job. He worked hard, he was there, he made the conferences, he made the meetings, he was there for the veterans. Tony did a good job.
Oh, when we went to the other, different organizations for the veterans, he was at all of, we have six different organizations, he was always participating, he was always involved very much, so grateful for that, I think we're grateful.
I'll say, you know, Tony recently retired from the county, but even in his, in his retirement, he was more than, in the illness that he was facing, the struggles that he had personally with respect to his declining health, he was still willing and eager to assist Be-County by continuing to provide resources to us, he didn't have to do, but that's kind of the guy that Tony was. He was willing to help out however he could. And it's the kind of, kind of friend you want, the kind of person you want to be involved with, and the kind fellow employee you'd like to have, stand your time. So, and again, deep condolences to the family of Tony Ferguson. Thank you. Anything further? Okay, moving on. Agenda Item Number Eight, approved Commissioners' Court regular term meeting schedule for fiscal year 2024, 2025. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Nine, approved Be-County holiday schedule for fiscal year 2024, 2025, always a fun one. I was really quick, we didn't even talk about any of the potential.
We know, we have.
How many are there?
I, I'm not sure, 35?
No.
Come on.
No, not 35, dude. Sorry, tap that, 17. Is that right? Everybody got real quiet, I say.
With the state of Texas, they, you can say, we're going to give you more holidays in lieu of a pay raise. We can't afford any more holidays.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot, and we do, yeah, we do both, though.
Yes, we do.
We give more holidays and birthdays, yeah. All right. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Ten, approved independent contractor agreement between Tina Crowe at Be-County for on-site sewage facilities OSSF inspections.
To approve, I noticed that the not succeed is 5,000 and the cost is 200 per inspection.
Yes, sir. I have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I will say, we, we got started in earnest on this last week, and to share, we had company completed, we have five completed already. So if anybody out there has been waiting on a permit, please get with our Community Affairs Department so we can get, get you sorted just as quickly as possible. Thank you for your continued patience in that regard. Is there anything further to discuss in this agenda?
I just want to say that we're taking that expense out of professional services in Form 9, just to make it seamless that we don't have to do any type of...
Okay. That sounds good, I'll make a little note here. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Eleven, we already addressed, so we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Twelve, approved Texas Department of Agricultural, Agriculture's Texas Feeding Texans Grant Resolution. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, approved selection of bid for expo restroom roof repair. Commissioner Baez, or no, Commissioner Lanning. Commissioner who? Commissioner Lanning.
You're, you're, all the buildings telling the...
Yeah, I thought that's, I thought that was over there. Of course of conduct.
Right, right.
Commissioner Lanning, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, looking at these three bids, all you guys have a copy. On, on the lowest bid, there were some concerns about the 60 sheets plywood. You don't know what the plywood looks like that's currently under the sheath of, so there's nothing that says, you know, in case they're bad, or they just said that they're actually going to replace them, so if the sheath goes off, and there's nothing wrong with the plywood, and it was, it's nothing we didn't have to be. And then also, on that right construction, there was no explanation of the gauge, we said that they were using on the roof as well, so that's, and the under, under that tent. So my motion is to award to Cipres Roofing... for the total of twenty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars to the Exo Center Restrooms.
I have a motion and a second.
Steve Flores, correct. I'm giving approved vendor, Madam Martin.
It will be once that agenda done and concluded.
Commissioner, any issues with the second bidder? A nice bit of.
No, other than just the two floors is a little more detailed and. We have a history.
We do. When do we expect destruction to begin? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, Commissioner Lanning.
Your honor.
Yes, I'm such a role. I do not want to spoil your play. Since things slowed down a bit, permission be excused. Judge, move to court.
Permission granted. That's your welcome to stay as long as you want, Mr. Knight.
We've got a court. We've got a trial office.
Okay, well, go get ready. Yes, sir. Thanks for being here this morning, too. We still have a little bit of time, so we're going to jump over agenda item number fourteen. Everybody in the room, please do not let me just blow right past ten a.m. without thinking about it again, as is something I could do. So we'll move on to agenda item number fifteen, approved funding request for county emergency communications tower.
So Judge, there, I guess a couple items now. I'm going to refer over a little bit to more. I'll be here for the ARP. The current, what was it, discussed at one of the meetings here is that we have certain dollars that we need to allocate. And a recommendation was made to try and allocate those dollars first, and then should we need additional funding from the interest money backfill. Or option two, which is great to have options when you have some two dollars, it's always a good thing to do, that money could be utilized out of the interest money. However, following the same guidelines that we utilize in the ARPA funding for it, so that's why we're staying in compliance. So Commissioner, I'd like to get your input from this as far as, remember, the ARPA funding.
Okay, let me preface that by saying, I think this Jennifer has some information for us, but let me go into this first and then we'll. The ARPA committee met, and we agreed that this was something that we need to look at. We allocated up to thirty thousand dollars of money as the ARPA fund. The justification is that ARPA fund is not county dollars, okay? And it can be spent on non-county stuff like a fire department. Once the interest on the ARPA money goes into the county PAC, if you will, it becomes county money. So you can't legally spend county money on non-county items. That's why we want to use the ARP money to fund our up to thirty thousand dollars on this. And then if we have to, we can backfill that with that interest money and not have to worry about getting some type of deal with the application. But in the meantime, Jennifer has some information for us. They need a little more information in order for them to approve it and get it done. So I'll let you call yours.
So on the ARPA side, the one thing that's kind of coming into play is that in the beginning, we had a large bucket to work with for these allocations. Well, now we're at the smallest, you know, allocating the final pennies and cents of this funding that we receive. So we need a better idea of the actual dollar amounts that are remaining, and we're trying to put all of that into the agreement with Skidmore trying in to make sure that all of those ducks are in a row essentially before we finish up. We have until December to utilize and allocate these funds. So on the ARPA side, we're just trying to make sure that the agreement that we present to Commissioners Court has all of the correct information on it to continue.
So basically, you need an exact dollar amount?
Or we're just making sure with that agreement. We don't have the agreement yet. So we need to prepare all of that on the grant work side to get it through for Commissioners Court.
Okay, because what the committee is recommending is up to thirty thousand dollars?
Up to thirty thousand, and right now that bucket remaining is seventy-four thousand.
Right.
So we're making sure that that bucket is correct, which it is, but, you know, dollars and cents. We're trying to make sure at the tail end of it. So once we allocate that twelve thousand for the EUC, that overage, which we have to speak with the ARPA committee about, and that thirty thousand, that's going to severely eat into that with the remainder of thirty-one thousand. So we're just trying to tighten that number up along with the agreement to present to Commissioners Court to make sure that this project is set to use in that allocation.
You think we'll have that agreement finalized by the next quarter?
I do. Yes, sir. We're in the works on it right now. We just didn't have it by this thing.
Because what we want to do is, what we found at our ARPA meeting, we couldn't understand how come they could put up the tower for twenty-six thousand or thirty thousand dollars when they cost a hundred thousand? That's when it came out. There were two of the fire department folks, oh, we're going to pay the difference, like eighty-some odd thousand.
Yes.
Which I wish we'd have known that reason, but we didn't because this is cheap.
Yes.
But that's good. They're shoulder most of it.
Yes.
So if they can just wait another couple of weeks, we'll have that agreement with Skidmore time and it'll all be done.
Correct.
But that was the justification of using the ARPA money. That's federal money. We can use it on non-county items. County money we really can use on county.
Because if I'm not mistaken, the initial discussion was to use it out of the interest, and then once we had our discussion with the ARPA committee, that's where it changed to use it into this bucket.
That was the thought originally, was use it out of the interest, but when you find out that the interest actually went into the county's bank account, it's now county money. It's no longer federal interest.
Different parameters to use.
Right, it's county money.
Okay, so those are those details that we are finalizing in the agreement, similar to what we did when we did our thirty thousand dollar allocation to each fire department. This is going to be relatively the same. We're just honing that down.
So Judge, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we table this agenda item until we get further information.
Bring it back to the next agenda.
Yes.
When's the next court date?
Next meeting. It's the twenty-sixth.
August twenty-sixth. You want to table this agenda item until our August twenty-sixth agenda?
It's going to happen. It's just we got to be sure we get all the.
Yes, yes. We are on the road to it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your diligence.
Yes.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Excellent timing, everybody. I'm going to go back to, I'm going to talk slowly. Going to go back to, did I say I'm going to talk slowly? I'm going to speak slowly and make sure that I'm deliberate in the discussion that I have as I lead up to this next agenda item. The next agenda item on our agenda that I'm going to call is going to be the agenda after we passed it, and now we're going back to it. So we're going back to the prior agenda item that I passed over when we just considered agenda item number fifteen. So, and that's what I'm going to do, but I want to make sure that I'm deliberate about it so that everybody's clear. At this point in time, I'm going to call agenda item number fourteen, public hearing pursuant to Texas Transportation Code, Chapter two-five-three, entitled County Improvement of Subdivision Roads, Vernon, two thousand and three, to consider placement of two no-through truck signs on county road CR three oh eight from Farm to Market, two-eight-two-four, to County Road three oh four in B County, Texas, and allocation of cost thereof. The time is ten a.m. Subpart A, open public hearing at ten a.m. Do I have a motion to open public hearing?
You have said motion to.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is open. Are there any members of the public who wish to address Commissioners Court with respect to this agenda? Item, which is a public hearing. And I'm asking for anybody to, who wants to speak, can't speak. A little, like, looked like we may have had somebody, but it doesn't look like anybody wants to speak, going once, going twice. Moving on to agenda item subpart B, close public hearing. I have a motion to close. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Public hearing is closed. Thank you for your time, and we will move on back to our regularly scheduled agenda item, which is agenda item number sixteen, approved tax assessor collector's request to use the county credit card for registration, hotel incidental, and parking fees for Vichy Young Conference on November nineteenth through the twenty-first of twenty twenty-four. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Is that the only agenda item you are here for? Ms. Mattis, you're welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Bet you may leave as well. Agenda item number seventeen, approve imposition of optional fees scheduled for calendar year CY two zero two five. I guess this is you as well, is it not?
No, sir.
No? Yep. It's you. We'll give you a few minutes.
I just realized, can you put that on? But yes, this is just from the Texas Department.
Are you ready? Do you want us to table it to the next meeting? It looks like what you need correction from is.
This is just our recurring fee from the motor vehicles department.
Do we want to include any additional fees?
Yes, that is up to the.
Well, what do you think?
The constant looking at everything is already as we are. I believe we should leave it the same. Let's see if we decide differently.
Wow, gotta wait. Does any commissioner like to comment on whether or not they want to?
They don't know. They're often being reduced.
I wish we could, Commissioner. I wish we could.
Statutorily, we can.
Just one clarification for me from an educational standpoint.
Yes.
Could you just give me the thirty thousand in the purpose of the fees?
The purpose of the fees, the county road and bridge fees are, for the non-seeing of the ten dollars, that's what we get from our collections that we give to our departments to help fund. The child safety fee that would go to the state because it may not exceed a dollar fifty, and this is for the enhancement of childcare, health, nutrition, including child abuse intervention, drug and alcohol abuse prevention, and other purposes, and then the transportation protection fee applies only to the Bay County branches to the.
Thank you.
Is there, I guess at this point in time, what we need is, unless any commissioner would like to propose an additional fee for the road and bridge or child, it's called child safety.
These are, these are basically being charged right now at the same amount, right?
Yes.
There's no change.
We have not changed.
And so that would be the motion to continue on with no changes. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Why have everybody seconded? Motion and a second. Sometimes I think we're moving slowly and deliberately, and other times I think I'm the anchor that's holding everybody back. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Ms. Mattis. Is there anything else that you don't know that you need to be here for?
I'm not sure. I'm just going to wait. I'm just going to stay.
Probably a good idea.
Pretty exciting stuff coming up.
Moving on to agenda item number eighteen, approved resolution supporting submission of Homeland Security Grant Program Operation Stoneguard an application for the Sheriff's Office.
Need to approve?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Anything? No, okay. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you for being here, Chief Deputy. Agenda item number nineteen, approved request for emergency budget amendment not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning HVAC issues and tower inspection for the Sheriff's Office. Wow, I have a motion to, but I worked out really well. Hang tight. Let me see if I can get a second on your motion. If they die.
I'll second with comment.
I've got a second. Would you like to make your comments now or after Chief Deputy makes his comments?
Let me let him go first.
Chief Deputy, you have the floor, sir. You almost got through.
Well, the H pack continues our, we got the fix, the fix.
Be careful.
For the, is that word? DOAS units, directed operating air system. That pre-treats air coming in.
Those were the big things we added.
Yeah, we added those. That was the fix. Now the fix program. We have four of those. Two of them have gone out, and the compressors are on the working. That's a great thing. Labor side of it. Fifty, this is a tower, fifty-six hundred bucks we need to inspect the tower. Back to HVAC, eleven thousand, twenty-eight hundred, eight fifty so far.
All these added at one time?
This is labor. No, this is what we've been covering, but it's getting worse. Compute, two transmissions this morning. Blue, two transmissions. Those are twenty-eight hundred dollars. Can we do them ourselves or do you take rent? Our main is, that's the way to, they actually have the equipment they.
They replace transmissions?
Yeah.
Talk later.
I know there's three separate items, but that's unforeseen expenses.
So those heaters went out, but part of them is still working or?
No, no, the compressors went out.
The compressor?
In their purpose.
Just the labor.
Well, with the cranes and all kinds of.
Just a question. I wonder what the compressors cost.
I don't know that. And I don't know, but yeah.
And they're part of the DO?
DOAS.
Those are where the compressors are?
Yeah.
Do you know how many times they push or?
I think they're about, I don't know. No, I don't. We have four.
They're less than a year?
No.
They're a year. Not far.
And they're under warranty.
They were installed.
Doesn't cover away.
This is about the time.
You'll notice with.
About four to five years when they'll start.
Right, they get their warranty. That's when it starts.
Yeah, that's when they start falling apart.
Well, it's already, it's already worn out. It's already worn out. It's a sense of warranty.
Would this work for this money that you need? Will it cover another addition? I mean, they fixed this unit eight. Will it be uncovered?
Yes, it would cover what's going on right now.
There's four out currently or just one? Just two?
We already taken care of one. That was the twenty-eight hundred bucks. This one is eleven thousand dollars. Now the different things.
When the tech came out and quoted you the prices, did they give you any indication as to why the machine is failing?
They don't know. It's still in use. We're figuring that out, and that's why the higher price for labor and figure it out.
Okay.
The interesting thing about some of these warranty items is these engineers are pretty savvy, and they can figure out a piece of equipment to the date on when it's going to go out. It's not only the sheriff's department. It's also a home building, too, which is pretty sad that we're in that situation, but they know exactly when it's going to go out.
Every time we lock in, especially our chair, it's about a thousand, five, eleven, seven.
One of the questions I have was around the tower in order to, I guess, help the court here, I guess, kind of plan for some of these towers. Like, that's something you typically have in your inspection program, or maybe now with your maintenance team, this is probably your call here. Identify here, we need these dollars for tower inspection.
We've had this tower for five years.
We do have.
Yes, sir.
We do have contract service.
Jones one.
So it's not, so this one's not.
Judge, Jonesy one.
No, it's already been inspected. We're waiting on their survey to say what's wrong. That was just an inspection. And there will be a time.
And part of the problem is you've got to be inspected for insurance purposes.
We need to have them inspected.
Yes.
Because we have to, we're going to...
Yeah, that's why I said...
We're going to do it instead of reacting.
We said, remember, you're allowed, our, our, to remember if you need to, that's here, just add the other project. That's just how it's going to be.
No, just trying to get a better understanding how we can become a little bit more proactive and, and get my surprises and know that...
Whatever you know about it, I'm a, the tower on seven ninety-nine was near recharge since nineteen fifty-seven. When you, when you... Six, seven?
What, uh, Jonesy?
No, one on seven ninety-seven, uh, seven ninety-nine.
James?
Nineteen thirty-seven.
We took that one down, right?
Yes.
And do it sell it somewhere? Is it still in use? Did we just take it down?
No, it's down.
It's down. And I know, I went out there and looked, and the mesquite trees are growing up thirty and forty feet all around.
Well, that was probably what we sold it.
It probably hold it up.
Holding it up.
But it is, uh, it was, let's just use for a minute. Like, forgot it was after.
Well, somebody...
No, well, that way, Commissioner can include it in, like, on the, on the, like, prevent a maintenance or a project.
Yeah.
We're doing that. We have two units on the Justice Building that were foreseen for this year already. So I added on, onto it.
Well, we pay, we pay maintenance, uh, we pay, what is it? We pull the, we pay a yearly thing to train, fifty-two thousand dollars a year to, to inspect the, um, the AC units, about the dollars. We're going to get the Texas Air to take over the whole system. We shouldn't train. It's not really doing what we want. It's, it's a thousand dollars more if they come in and inspect.
Okay. Now, they'll take care of it fifty thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, I want something more bankable.
But we get, and that's not the tower now.
At the Sheriff's Office?
Yeah, we give...
Yes.
I don't believe that.
One more question?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Oh, no more questions. I thought you said one more question. I'll take all the time, Commissioner. I have a motion and a second, uh, on agenda item number nineteen. Is there any further discussion? Yes, ma'am?
So my, so the, my recommendation was to set this just in for, uh, Chief Deputy to tell you the, the things that have already been fixed, because this is the, the threshold that we're at, just to let you know. These are all the fixes that have already been going on, and he's already at the limit. So we're going to go ahead and go through this, put in that budget.
It checks all the boxes for the emergency?
Yes, for sure.
Lot?
And so, um, and already takes care of what we're assuming of, but Ryan repeated the pay policy. Two transmissions this morning. Says we have it on that.
Yes.
Lower around here.
There's no further discussion. I have presented, so... All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, Chief Deputy. Thank you, gentlemen. Discussion?
Just care of these fifty, uh, watching.
They'll be back soon.
Thank you.
Can I take donuts or... Waffles or something?
Love to.
A gift of some sort. Moving on, agenda item number twenty, approved planned maintenance and annual service agreement for generators located at the Justice Center, fuel farm, expo tower, and tax office, tabled from the July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four special call meeting. Judges, this was one that I asked Ryan to work on. Uh, the agreement that we've got was just excessive, and I want to recommend to the court that we just, we don't accept these bids, or I'll just keep on looking for other services to, to roll out to these generators. Because that, that's just not reasonable. It's too much money.
If you would, Ryan, what are your thoughts, sir, since you're right in the middle of this?
I think we need to find somebody to, uh, uh, we had had this discussion the other day. It is possible, but we have to find somebody to do it, because the moment it doesn't kick over and start or we start, the belts get grown, because we're going to need something in place. So we may have talked about trying to reach out to other local vendors. The problem with, with this current one is they charge us every time they come.
And they just charge you to tell you what's wrong with it and fix it. Oh, this is, now you need to get in. Yeah, sounds like a lawyer.
I, I sent it a minute ago. It seems like, and I'm just laying it, just seems like, seems like it's bad. Every time they show them, it's twelve hundred or fifteen hundred dollars. It's an emergency need to get fixed, but boy, the most, the next time we come to inspect, it's not an emergency.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons, Chief, like, I went, we went to the tax office, and Ms. Mattis was there. We had maintenance, we had Sméckel Electric there. We shut down, like, the power went out at, at, at the tax office. I was worried about the servers. I'm not... I wasn't worried about anybody else. The server was, I was worried. I was, I was personnel. No, it's a big for servers to go down. So we cut it off. And that generator took care of business, and it wasn't even using a third of the power it needed.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so it, it, it was, it was good, right?
We hear, but they're great, but...
That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. This is a lot of money on these.
Let me, I, I added all of, the average, there's four different generators. Thirty-six ninety-five, thirty-three seventy-five, thirty-three seventy, thirty-four twenty-five, thirteen thousand eight hundred sixty-five watt. I agree with y'all, but we got to get somebody quickly before we keep pitting with this and say, well, let's get somebody else, because two of these are natural. One of them's propane, one's natural gas, the other tier diesel. That diesel goes bad. Then you, you've ruined a, a motor or an engine or something, and it won't work when you need it. When's the last time anything was made, this was done on me?
They did, they did quarterly.
So they're under, these people are under our contract?
Yes.
Yes, this is just the, this is the renewal. We, we had it before with them.
When, when is this, when was this?
Um, I'm looking. I don't see a date on it.
This was sent to us...
We got it in July, but I'm wondering when they...
When's the existing grid?
I think Sept, the end of September, because I think they do it by our budget.
By our budget year.
You've got a little time.
I've got a little time, and that's why I said...
By default, we could always have to go back to this, but you've got time to find...
Right, and I, I just think that, that's an extravagant amount of money.
Who, I mean, just a question. The other counties that have generators, who are they using? Have we checked with San Pat or some other county? Oasis County?
King Verz, San Pat, this is...
No, no, no.
No, just see who their contractor is.
Yeah, see, see their contracts.
They probably changed whatever you wrote, you know?
Go ahead. They don't have generators.
They might not have.
But I would, I would recommend...
You know, I'll go south. I'll, I'll ask like Jim Wells or Glenn Burke or something like that.
Yeah, any of them.
Two, two names.
Because we, we've got to have somebody, but we've got the way we think till the end of September.
Correct. I, I just didn't like these bids. They're, they're...
And that's my, that's probably why they're like that, because the, there's no vendors.
Yeah.
That's what my fear is.
Let me ask a really strange question. Have we gone to our local folks here and said, hey, can y'all do this? What would you charge?
They, they can't because it's not their brand. And the minute that he calls to ask the question, they'll say, hey, are you an approved vendor for this?
Yeah, he's a generic.
Correct. So anything that's generic, yes, he can take care of. But if it's not, and it's colder, or if it's, if it's one of the other brands, he can't. They'll, they'll, they'll refer. Yes, sir?
If you're down south, I'll, I'll check east and west.
If we call over and ask them who their representatives are that can do this, seriously? We can do that. Just call over.
We can.
Call them directly. Okay, great. We'll, we'll find something.
Right, but these, I'm, I'm just going to say, hey, we need to...
Well, let's not do that yet, because we still got a contract up in September.
Right, but no, we're not going to renew them.
We want them.
Not now. Right.
Okay.
I'm, I'm presuming that this is a, uh, something at which no action will be taken, but I entertain that any motions that want to be made? Hearing done, uh, we will move on. Agenda item number twenty-one, approved order approving B County Road and Bridge Administrator Ray Longbordias. Aye.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item twenty-two, approved order, approved order approving election administrator Laura Warnixes. Aye.
Make your motion with a, with a question.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Witt, you have the floor.
What is that?
Oh, that's the, that's how you spell elections.
Okay, elections. E-L-E-C-T-R-I-O-N-S.
Yep, elections.
That's a new, that's a new way.
That's how you pronounce it.
That's what's on the bond for state farm. We probably need to...
Let's just get...
I, I did already tell Patricia that that's why. I saw that.
I thought maybe the new way is, we have a new...
Oh, I am.
Elections, actually physics too. Administration.
No problem.
Thank you for catching that.
No, no problem.
Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item twenty-three, approve amendment to the Auditor's Office procurement procedures and update the purchase categories appendix A, approved vendor list.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you, Ms. Cantu, for working on this and getting this updated for us. It provides us such better, uh, flexibility in our county expenditure needs.
If you would, well, I understand that up to forty thousand dollar limit, if they're approved vendor, go do the work. Okay.
There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Really cooking with gas now. Agenda item number twenty-four, Hurricane Harvey, Texas General Land Office, GLO, Community Development, block grant, CBDG. Status of project update. Gentlemen?
No, I'm sorry, I was...
No, wait a second. Still waiting. Moving on.
You have, you have a handle.
Just to tell y'all that the RFI has been submitted by Grant Work, so now it is back in the GLO's hands.
Yes, excellent. That is good news.
Yes.
Moving on to agenda item number twenty-five, American Rescue Plan, ARP, status of projects. Gentlemen? Excellent. Moving on. We have no executive session items. So we'll move on to agenda item number twenty-six. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? I have a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much for your time this morning, gentlemen. Excellent meeting. Everybody that helped put it together and...